All right, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, May 5th, 2025 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. So I am calling this meeting to order tonight. And I will go through our introductions to the folks up here on the dais. We have Caleb Snell, our Teacher of the Year, who did a wonderful job at our Teacher Recognition, or Teacher of the Year. Thank you for that. That was awesome. So Shannon Lancaster, Board Member. We have Catherine Moore, Board Member. We have Mr. Sam Treadaway, Board Member. Our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapicki. Myself, Board Chair Rob Walter. Vice Chair is Greg Mills. Pamela Escobar is a Board Member. We have Melanie Freeman as our other Board Member. And then William Eisenhower is our Board Attorney with Johnson Allen and Hord. And we have two SROs this evening, so I want to thank them for being here. Officer Tanya Nesbit, she's the SRO at WR Odell Elementary School. And Kim Bond, who's the SRO at Mary Frances Wilson. Thank you. So with that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item is the setting of the agenda. We do have some important interns coming, so they're not all here yet, so we would like to push that one back into committee reports if that's okay with everybody. So I would need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda with that minor change.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Ms. Escobar.
Second.
Second. Mr. Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we have our agenda set for this evening. And we will move on through that one, and we'll start with the, so I'm just right through the Board Chair and Superintendent comments. So I've got a few comments. Let me read a statement here for you. So over the past two days, our Board has been made aware of comments on social media that have been directed at one of our Board Members. While we fully support the freedom of speech and rights of citizens to express their opinions on social media platforms, we would encourage those who do to uphold the values of civility, respect, and constructive dialogue. Disagreement is healthy and a necessary part of the democratic process, but when that disagreement becomes personal, hurtful, hostile, it undermines the very spirit of the collaboration that we all strive to maintain. Board Members dedicate their time and serve students, families, and schools. While public service, we all know, comes with scrutiny, it should not come with harassment or personal attacks. So we want to urge all of us to engage in conversations that reflect values that we teach or try to teach our students, which is kindness, empathy, and respect for others. Let us be models of the behaviors and hope to see displayed in our classrooms and our neighborhoods. So as a Board, we remain committed to transparency, accountability, open communication with the community. We welcome your input as always and your partnership as we work together to support the success and well-being of every student in our district. So I had that, and then I have, I wanted to recognize our Board Members for being active as active as they have been. It's been a very busy time here. Your Board Members are out in the community, they're out in the schools. They've been to, we've had committee meetings, we've had events that we've attended, celebrations, performances, recognitions, student showcases, which myself and Ms. Escobar did attend at Northwest. And coming up is our graduation, so a lot of exciting stuff occurring. So those were my comments. Mr. Superintendent, what do you have for yours?
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Just a few brief, a few brief comments. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our teachers. As we know, this, these next, this, this week and next, we are going to honor our teachers with Teacher Appreciation Week. And we celebrate something truly special this week, from May 5th through the end of May 9th and into next week as well. We pause to recognize and honor the incredible educators who pour their hearts, minds, and talents into helping our students learn, grow, and thrive. To our teachers across the district, thank you for showing up. Thank you for showing up every single day, not just with lesson plans, but with patience, passion, and purpose. Thank you for being role models, mentors, and encouragers. Thank you for seeing the potential in every child and for refusing to never give up on even the hardest days. In your classrooms, learning comes alive. You spark curiosity, build confidence, and teach far beyond the textbook. You don't just prepare students for the next test, you prepare them for life. Your impact is immeasurable as you work to inspire minds, engage hearts, and shape futures. I know, and we all know, that this work isn't easy. It takes strength, flexibility, creativity, and heart. And while one week will never be enough to thank you for all that you do, I hope you feel the deep appreciation we have for all of you, not just now, but always. We have all benefited in our lifetimes through the excellence of a teacher. And I'm sure we can all remember the classroom where that one teacher sparked that curiosity, that innovation, that love of learning in all of us. We can all quickly remember that teacher, that one person who inspired us. Cabarrus County has many of those teachers. And the research consistently shows that the quality of teaching is the most significant factor impacting student achievement, surpassing the influence of other school-related variables. Great teachers have a lasting positive impact on students, affecting not only their academic performances, but also their long-term success, including college attendance, career paths, and overall well-being. On behalf of our Board of Education, our district leadership, and our families, and our entire community, we say thank you. Thank you for making a difference every single day. You are the foundation of our schools and the heartbeat of our mission. So again, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Never let, never, never feel as though you're not appreciated, because we certainly do. Cement of the Year reminders, if you'll be patient with me for a moment, I just want to make sure I go through this with everyone in our community. As you all know, graduation season is upon us, and we will begin our graduation ceremonies on May 17th with two graduation ceremonies at West Cabarrus High School. The first one is the Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College that will take place at 10:00 a.m. at West Cabarrus High School. The second one on the same day, May 17th, will occur at 1:00 p.m. with the Cabarrus Early College of Technology graduating at that day as well. We will then move to May 21st, where we have two graduations. The first one is at the, these are all at the Cabarrus Arena. So on May 21st, at the Cabarrus Arena at 5:00 p.m., the Performance Learning Center will graduate, followed by the Cabarrus Virtual Academy at 6:30 p.m. on May 21st. On May 22nd, at 9:00 in the morning, Hickory Ridge High School will graduate, followed by JM Robinson High School at 12:30 p.m., followed by Mount Pleasant High School at 4:00 p.m., and then wrapping up the day at May 22nd at 7:30 p.m. with Northwest High School graduating. Again, these are all at the Cabarrus Arena. On May 23rd, West Cabarrus High School will graduate at 9:00 a.m. Concord High School will graduate at 12:30 p.m. Cox Mill High School will graduate at 4:00 p.m. And Central Cabarrus High School will wrap up our graduation season at 7:30 p.m. on May the 23rd. So again, we welcome everyone to come and celebrate this event with us, and we offer our thanks and our appreciation to everyone that has helped us get our students to the culmination of all the things that we do here and remind us of our why. And it's an exciting time for us. We look forward to the graduation season that's going to be upon us before we know it, in short, very two short weeks. And lastly, two things. The Parent Engagement Survey will close on Friday, May 9th. The survey remains available on our website. It takes approximately 10 to 15 minutes to complete. If you have questions about the survey or your confidentiality, please contact our school system and ask to speak to Mr. Dustin Schuh, our Chief of Staff, and he will walk you through any questions you have. We thank you for all of those that have already taken the time to provide your honest feedback, and I look forward to sharing the results with you in the coming months. And then again, lastly, at your, at some of the seats this evening, and I know our Board has it today, at the dais, you will see the Engage Magazine. This is the second edition that Mr. Phil Furr and his team have put together to celebrate the great things that are happening here in Cabarrus County schools. I would ask you to take this and share this with your, your community and, and read through it. Again, it talks about a lot of the accomplishments of the wonderful things that our students that are here, both present, and those that have graduated and moved on to different careers, and it talks a lot about the successes they've had. And many of them, when you read the, the neat thing in this magazine, I noticed that particularly this time around, they all attribute it back to a teacher or to a moment in the school where that person influenced them and, and helped them get through their, their experience here at Cabarrus County schools. So again, it really highlights our kids and their achievements, and most importantly, it talks about the wonderful teachers that we have here in Cabarrus County and the excellence that they continue to produce and the achievements of our students. So I thank, thank Mr. Furr and his team for that. And again, as I always say, we need to tell our story and tell our narrative and make sure we're promoting all the good things that are happening here in Cabarrus County, because our kids surely are special, as are our teachers. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. We'll move on to the next item, which is our reports section. We've got a number of those. Do we want to wait on the Board Member Committee Reports? Is everybody, are still waiting, right?
Yeah, I may have to go.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do the 6.01 Committee Reports, and we've had a number of committee meetings. If I could ask Mr. Mills, would you give us an update on your committee?
Sure. So the Legislative Agenda Committee has been watching several bills in the North Carolina Legislature. And just to give you a little bit of a background, a lot of you will remember, a couple of years ago, we had a short summer break because we were trying to shift the schedule forward so that we could have our school calendar aligned with our local college calendars and so that we could get our end-of-course, end-of-grade testing, those mid-terms done before Christmas break. The Senate has been moving a bill that they call a Compromise Bill on Calendar Flexibility. The current way the bill is written would have us still have to adjust our calendar by one week in order to comply with this new legislation. It would also add stiff penalties in terms of funding if we were not to comply with it. At the beginning of the year, we talked to our legislatures on, legislators on the House side, and they put in a local bill for us. That would cover Cabarrus County if it were to make it through the House and the Senate. At the same time, the House is working on a calendar flexibility bill. So what has happened recently, as of last week, is the Senate passed their bill 754, and so that is heading over to the House. So we have worked with staff here to write a resolution, which I'd like to read now. The resolution is, let me get my glasses. Resolution reads, "Resolution by the Cabarrus County Board of Education Opposing Senate Bill 754, School Calendar Flexibility a New Alternative. Whereas, the Cabarrus County Board of Education is committed to providing high-quality educational opportunities that meets the needs of all students, staff, and families within the community, and whereas local boards of education have historically requested calendar flexibility in order to align school calendars with the academic needs of students, regional community college schedules, local industry requirements, and other local priorities. And whereas, public charter schools in North Carolina currently operate with full flexibility in setting their academic calendars, including start and end dates. And whereas, this disparity creates an inequitable educational environment where charter schools can implement innovative and locally responsive scheduling practices while traditional public schools cannot. And whereas, any legislation that further restricts or fails to extend similar calendar flexibility to traditional public schools exacerbates this inequity and undermines local control. Whereas, Senate Bill 754, School Calendar Flexibility a New Alternative, while claiming to offer calendar flexibility, ultimately imposes additional mandates, limitations, and burdens that restrict the authority of local boards of education to make decisions in the best interest of their communities. And whereas, Senate Bill 754 contains provisions that require a uniform statewide calendar, start date, and end date that do not take into account local needs, community input, or the needs of specific school populations such as those in early college education programs. And whereas, this legislation undermines the principle of local control and erodes the ability of local elected school boards to exercise discretion and responsiveness to the unique needs of their school districts. And whereas, research and experience demonstrate that locally determined school calendars enhance student outcomes, better support academic success, create opportunities for enrichment and remediation that align with post-secondary education and workforce preparation. And whereas, the Cabarrus County Board of Education stands to support, stands in support of true calendar flexibility that empowers local districts to determine school calendars based on what is most effective for student achievement and community needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education formally expresses its opposition to Senate Bill 754, School Calendar Flexibility a New Alternative, and urges the North Carolina General Assembly to reject this legislation. Be it further resolved that the Board strongly advocates in favor of House Bill 205 that returns full calendar flexibility to the local board of education in Cabarrus County, recognizing that those closest to students are best positioned to, best positioned to make decisions in their interest. The Chair and Superintendent are authorized to disseminate this resolution to members of the North Carolina General Assembly and the Governor, and the Board encourages parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to oppose Senate Bill 254 and stand in support of House Bill 205." So that is the resolution. And again, House Bill 205 is the local bill that all of our current House of Representatives members put in on our behalf, so we appreciate that. We definitely want to put our support behind them and that effort. If it's possible, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that the Board approve this tonight, because since that has passed through the Senate last week, it could come up for hearing this week, more likely next week, but we would rather go ahead and get this sent out and into their hands as soon as possible.
So Board Members, would you support actually putting it on our action tonight?
I would second that motion.
Okay. I think we need to move it to our action agenda.
We would need to amend our agenda.
Amend our agenda briefly to add it as an action item.
That's right. We'll take it two-thirds, but yes. So just, there'd need to be a motion to amend the agenda to add that to the action items.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so a motion, a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor of adding that to our action, adding it as an action item tonight? Let's say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will stick that at the end.
Just I want to say one other thing. There is the statewide calendar flexibility bill that the Houses, on the House side, that's Bill Number 121. We have a trip scheduled to go to Raleigh to talk to our legislators on May 13th, and so we'll keep a close eye on all of this and probably put some more support behind that bill as well during that trip.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mills. Dr. Kapicki, you have anything to say about how the, that bill may impact our, our system if it was passed?
So I think a lot remains to be seen as we see which bills cross over. I talked with our legislative group this afternoon, and we're kind of watching to see what bills are coming over. We think this is a good resolution. We think Mr. Mills has done a really good job with Melanie Freeman, our two Board Directors in leading this charge, so I appreciate and help commend them for their, their time, their time on this topic. I think if we're given the appropriate flexibility, as we have used on our own initiatives over the last couple of years, I think it would be a positive thing for kids. So again, I appreciate Mrs. Freeman and Mr. Mills's work on this, along with the work that Dustin Schuh and Mr. Furr have put into this as well, so thank you.
And I also want to thank the committee for the work that you guys are doing. Any other committee reports? Shannon, do you?
I'm the liaison for the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and we just want to thank them for supporting the Night of Excellence and Teacher of the Year event. They did contribute $1,000 to the 2025 Teacher of the Year, so we need to thank them for their support of our schools. They also supported the Superintendent's Choice Arts Award. They gave $100 to the winners so that they could purchase their art that was displayed here at the county office. So we do want to give a thanks to the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and just please remember to support them. They have a great website with all their information on it. Thank you.
Dr. Kapicki?
I thank you for that, that report, Mrs. Lancaster. And again, I'd like to thank Amy Goff. I think she's done a great job with that work, and her leadership has definitely helped our, our kids here and supporting our teachers too as well. She also was prominent this weekend in one of the initiatives in the, the community as they tried to fight hunger in the area too. So Amy's doing a great job with that, and I appreciate that help, so thank you.
That's a great partnership that we have with them. Catherine, do we have any, any updates?
I did have the Safety Committee meeting this month, and I was just impressed at how many outside agencies come into that meeting. They give up their time to come to help keep our children safe, and I left feeling very good about my children. And also, the Calendar Committee finished up, it finished up a week early, and I give a shout-out to Caleb. I think Caleb could have done that calendar himself, being a high school teacher. He's so quiet, but give him a job that he knows to do, and he'll talk. But he did do a good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Sam? Okay. We did have a Finance Committee meeting last week, so to talk about where we are with our deficit, we also talked about NC, Senate's proposed budget, and then a little bit about tariffs and the impacts that those may have on our, on our system. So that's all I had for the committee reports. Pam?
So Calendar Committee, yes, to what Kat said. And it, yes, thank you, Caleb, for all your work, but also want to thank all the staff. There are some very important people in this room that really led the charge and kept everybody on task. It's parents, teachers, principals, it's a lot of folks that are involved in that. So getting all that input on a weekly basis and coming up with a calendar was very helpful. So thank you for that. Curriculum Committee, I think we meet next week. Yes, I'm getting a yes. And then I also attended a Transportation Meeting, and that also, it's, it's just good to see Art has a great rapport with his, his staff, and they are, anyway, that, that was a productive meeting as well. And now, I'm going to say for interns, just, our intern application for next year has closed. That was April 30th, so I have several applications and materials to go through. Last semester, you, we had a lot more interns. We had about 15 last, last semester, and now this semester, we have five, and we are so lucky to have two of them with us today, so I do want to recognize them.
Are you coming up with a study?
And for people who are not familiar with the internship program, it consists of weekly, or excuse me, monthly meetings with district staff who really explain their department, what they do within the school district, so it gives them a good overview of, of what is happening in the school district. And then we also meet and work on service project, a service project of their choice. And so there were two this year. Some participated in the Hispanic Family Resource Fair, getting donations for that or also helping out with the actual event. And then some also volunteered at Special Olympics. So it's, it is a time commitment. It's after school, obviously. They have to figure out a way to get here. I'm always impressed by their dedication and their hard work. And yeah, they're, they're, they really help me have a better understanding of what's happening in our school, so I really appreciate their time. So I would like to call up Anastasia for her certificate. There's a green dot. Great job. Can you just stand there for a second so we can take a picture with both of you? And then Nachrata is the other intern that was able to make it tonight. And I will share with Lori, Lori Furr, the great Lori Furr is going to help me share these with the, the interns who couldn't be here tonight, so thank you.
And then, and then we'll get through. Got it. All right, and then a group photo.
And here?
Perfect. Got it. Congratulations.
And we do want to thank Mrs. Escobar for the time that she takes for this program to make it a such a success as it has been, so really appreciate her work on this, on that with our interns, so thank you. That was all our committee reports, so I guess we can move on to our, Melanie, I'm sorry. Do you have any?
No, I just, working with Greg on the legislative and with, with Rob too on the finance, I do appreciate all the work that the staff puts in to bring us up to speed on what they see on a daily basis, because it becomes, and I'm, I'm, I'm very thankful for the monthly meetings, because as a new member, it works as a tutorial for me. So I really appreciate your patience and your, and your explanations of the budget, which is extremely difficult, and I just, I think they're doing a great job, and I appreciate them.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to our next item, which is the 6.02 Online Learning in Cabarrus County, and we have a few folks coming up. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Superintendent Kapicki, and members of the Board. We are excited to be here this evening, and I am proud to introduce to you Ms. Kristy Rotan, who is going to be sharing a few programmatic updates as it relates to our Cabarrus Virtual Academy, as well as the various programmatic opportunities that are available to students in Cabarrus County.
Well, for your time this afternoon. I, I have learned a lot about online learning since I started in this position in January of this year, so I've been there about four months now, which has been very exciting. Online learning in Cabarrus County is not COVID teaching, so I want to start with that. You know, we did the best we could in the pandemic, all of us teachers, but certainly that's not the model we follow at Cabarrus Virtual Academy, so we want to have the best model we can have. Currently, I have two daughters in college, both of whom take many online classes. As I'm sure some of you know, you have students in college too, so no matter what kind of classes are taken, they are going to be experiencing online learning. So currently, in our high school, we have all what is called asynchronous classes, which means they're very flexible classes. The students work on them at their convenience, so they, if they need to work a job during the day, they can work on classes at night if they have, some of our students have children. They may work on them when they have childcare. We have some students that are hospitalized. They may work on them during the work hours there, so it's a very flexible learning environment that is still to the high standards of Cabarrus County schools. We also cross-enroll many students in Cabarrus County. So we have students coming from all the high schools in addition to our full-time enrollment at Cabarrus Virtual Academy. We feel like we provide just super high-quality instruction. We have an instructional designer who plans our classes. He works with content experts, and they just create very dynamic classes. Our students are able to come into the building on Thursdays, so if they need tutoring, if they're just getting a little bit behind and they need that support, they can come into our building, and we are glad to work with them on those Thursdays. They also can schedule during office hours or schedule a time with their teacher to meet at any point to get that support that they may need. We have a middle school that we are also working with, and I'm very proud of our middle school. We have the middle schoolers currently, they are asynchronous model, so currently they come into our school every other Wednesday, as it were earlier this year. And so our teachers would work with them at that point in the building, but on the other days, they were synchronous, so they would dial in through Teams, they would talk, have their classes live instruction at that time. We do provide still tutoring for them. Obviously, some of our teachers meet with them one-on-one to make sure we are meeting all of their needs as well. In addition to the middle schoolers that chose to come to us through program choice, we also have some opportunity students. So Tier Three Opportunity Students are students who, for legal reasons, are not able to attend their traditional school, and they are assigned to the opportunity school but cannot go into the opportunity school. So this year, we served 17 Tier Three Opportunity Students, so they were able to take our classes, synchronous as they were at the time, and then on Fridays, the asynchronous, they would work with those students during that time. So it was a great way for those students to also get a high-quality education. We also work with a lot of our homebound students, so many of you may know what homebound is, but homebound, when students qualify, it could be for mental health, it could be for medical. be for mental health, it could be for medical, there's lots of reasons that they may not be able to attend their designated school. We can take them in at CVA in our middle school program and work with the homebound students. So we worked with many homebound students this year and that's been a great way for them to either cross enroll with us from their middle school or to become full-time CVA students. The last way we serve middle schools is we have about 22 students right now that are in our Math II class. So some of the middle schools have several students that need Math II in eighth grade. So instead of having a full-time teacher in the classroom with them at that school for such a small number of students, they're able to come together from across the county and have that instruction. That is a live instruction that they get at the end of their school day for Math II. There are some programmatic updates for next year for our middle school. As we've contemplated what was COVID teaching, what is good online teaching, we will be moving to an asynchronous model for our middle schools. So what does that mean? That means our middle schoolers will now have the flexibility that our high schoolers have had. So they will be able to work at a time that works with their family. Maybe they need the support from their parents and their parents can work with them at that time. It also allows us to open up our program to homeschools. And that's a program that we really want to, we want to share the benefits with the community because we think there's some good options there that homeschools might want to take advantage of. So we are going to be getting some of that information out soon as we move to that asynchronous model. I want to make sure everybody understands that we are still going to support the mental health needs of our students. We are inviting them in once a week, which will actually be more than they were in the building this week, once a week for tutoring next year so they can come in, whether it be just to do some work, to get a little bit of social time, to get some tutoring. They'll have that eligibility to come in once a week. We also will have one-on-one sessions. So we want someone checking in with each of our middle schoolers because we do realize they, they're not high schoolers. They can't have that independence yet and we want to make sure that we are not abandoning them in any way and they know exactly what is expected. But this personalized approach is going to be very beneficial for each of our middle school students. Another way that CVA is helping Cabarrus County right now is we are really monitoring our NCBPS enrollments. Ms. Ellen Kestner knows, she, she was our remote instructor for a while and NCBPS, we had huge numbers of NCBPS students. So we are really making sure we are being cost-effective with that. So we have a process where any student that has taken an online course through NCBPS, and let me back up. NCBPS is the state public online school. But we do get charged for every student that takes a class through NCBPS. So in the past, it's kind of been a more open enrollment and we've recently learned how that affects our budget. So we are, want to make sure we are really good stewards of our money. So we now have a process where schools and counselors apply for students to take online classes. And we have some data decision rules that we are using so we know who qualifies and what classes we think are, are best suited for that. So we are really monitoring the amount of NCBPS. So far, we have cut the amount greatly. NCBPS anticipates that we will be spending about $732,000 next year on NCBPS courses. They calculate that. So we have cut that amount. We have currently have, by the time I made this presentation, about 136. Had some last minutes come in. We're at about 160,000 in enrollments for this summer, fall, and spring altogether. I do know that amount will go up because our occupational course of study students, they use NCBPS classes and those students have not been registered for those classes yet. That will be done at the school level. And this year, that was about $160,000. So we anticipate that total budget amount to be about $320,000. So if we think about it, you know, that's a significant savings of about $400,000 that we think we will have by making these changes. Now, some of those students that would have taken NCBPS classes will of course be taking CVA classes or they might be taking CCP classes, but we want to make sure we are being as cost-effective with our money as we can be. So looking ahead, we are currently developing classes. We are working on our eighth grade classes for ELA, Science, Math, and Social Studies. We are beginning, beginning that building process so we will be ready to start the school year with those asynchronous classes. We are looking to build an AP Computer Science course. We do not currently have English III, so we are building English III. And our goal is to also build an Art I class in the very near future. So we're looking to design more classes to give more, to give students elective options and to give Cabarrus County Schools cross-enrolled students more options. That is all the information I had for you. Do you have any questions of me?
Board members to be, Mrs. Tretaway.
I'm, I am excited about the idea of reaching out to our homeschoolers. I'm curious how the enrollment and all that would work. And I don't, I apologize if this is getting ahead of what.
You're good. I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. No, so we are, Mr. Furr is working with me. We have a marketing campaign we are getting ready to begin. So there is an application process. When students want to enroll that are homeschooled, they have to enroll in a minimum of two courses. Their parents decide which courses. So if, if I'm a homeschool parent and maybe math is a struggle for me, then maybe I choose math or maybe I choose English. Parents choose those two courses and then those parents, the students then take the course with us. But there is an application process. It is on our website and we are working to update that website to make it a little more user-friendly.
So how does, how does that work with their transcript? I guess, on the receiving end of that, how does that work?
So they can, they, they do get credit for, through us. So they can either put that on their homeschool transcript or they can choose to be a Cabarrus County Schools graduate if they want to. They do not have to be a Cabarrus County School graduate.
Annie, over here. Melanie?
You said a minimum or maximum of two courses?
Minimum of two. They can take more if they want to, but it is a minimum of two.
Are there certain, so being that this is virtual, that would, would it be an asynchronous thing? They can suit their own schedules? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I was very excited when I saw all this.
Oh, it's good.
I think we've needed, a need for this for a while. So yesterday, when I was looking over their information, so if a traditional student has a hole in their schedule, they could come to your academy and fill in that hole for whatever class it might be, correct?
Like a cross-enrolled student?
Yes.
Yes. Now, we do have, we do, we are monitoring because we do know it does cost for, for them to come to CVA also, just like it does for NCBPS. So we want to monitor and make sure that we are being good stewards of the money, but yes, they sure can.
And then I was running the AP classes, so eventually you want to build that curriculum.
That's correct.
In the meantime, they're doing NCBPS.
Correct. And it will be based on numbers because we know there's like a tipping point where it is more expensive for, for them to be on NCBPS or more expensive to be on CVA. But it is our goal to begin building those classes with AP Computer Science Principals being the first one we're looking to build because it has the largest NCBPS enrollment.
And last, how about sports for the high school kids or students? Do they get to play? Have you even thought about that yet or still working it out?
Well, right now, when you're in program choice, if you go to a program choice school, you either play sports for that school or if it's an early college or CVA or PLC where we don't have sports, you do not play sports.
Well, this is exciting, so thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry.
Melanie?
AP classes, will that be open to the homeschoolers also? And will there be a process of recommendation?
I'm glad you asked. That's great. Yes, all of our classes are open, even Career and College Promise. So even if a homeschooler just wanted to come to us to take two classes through Ruin Cabarrus, the Career and College Promise classes, they could even come and do that. So as far as like a recommendation, you know, for a homeschooler, if their parent thinks they are ready and able to take an AP, we would certainly enroll them. You know, if we see they're struggling, then you know, we'll put in supports and get them through that course. And then maybe the next semester, that's not a course we recommend. But, but certainly that will be parent choice.
On, on the application, I'm, I'm assuming the cost and stuff is there also or is this no cost?
It's no cost. I'm glad you asked, no cost.
Even better.
Dr. Kapicki, you want to add something?
I just want to thank, thank Chrissy for giving this presentation this evening. She noted earlier in the presentation that she's been on the, the job for the last four months and has just done great things with her strategic thinking in a very short period of time. But what I want to make sure I remind everyone, some of you may know, most of you probably know this, but Chrissy has been a longtime Cabarrus County employee and comes to us from a long tenure as Assistant Principal of Concord High School and did great work there and continues to be successful and do great work at the Cabarrus Virtual Academy. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed out to folks that I thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
And we also appreciate you, Ms. Rotan. Thanks.
Thank you.
One more question, I guess, from.
How do you determine enrollment? Do you have caps on classes or?
Currently, we're not full, so we can, we can certainly take anyone that, that would like to come. Yes, we do look at the number enrolled because our goal for our teachers is for them to spend their time giving feedback. Since the classes are already created, I think Mr. Tretaway, I think your son may have even taught one, our goal is for the, the teachers to see the student work, give that student individualized feedback so they can be successful. So we do want to make sure we don't have so many that the teachers are overloaded, but we, you know, we, we crap them out like a normal classroom. We're not going to go above 35 in a section, but we will keep filling up as far as we can.
Okay, well, thank you so much for presenting and sharing all the good things that are going on with Virtual Academy and our program choice. So Sarah's sticking around, right? The next, next one is 6.03 VEX Robotics Updates. So we have Sarah and Jennifer.
Awesome. Good evening. So thank you so much for allowing us to come present a few great VEX Robotics updates for the upcoming season, as well as some celebrations from this past year. And I'd love to be able to turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Calligan. She currently serves as our STEM Coach at Central Cabarrus High School, as well as our VEX Robotics Coordinator.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. We are here on behalf of the Cabarrus County VEX Robotics Program to provide an update on the accomplishment and the growth of the robotics program here in Cabarrus County. During the 2024-2025 school year, Cabarrus County VEX supported 51 coaches and assistant coaches across 32 Cabarrus County Schools, which included 14 middle schools, nine, or 14 elementary schools, nine middle schools, and seven high schools, which totaled 127 robotics teams across the county, which impacted an estimated 508 students this past year. In addition, the Cabarrus County VEX Program was awarded funding in the amount of $93,450 from various VEX grants and donations throughout the 2025-2024 school year. Our program was the proud host to 21 VEX Robotics events for the state of North Carolina. Within those 21 events, we hosted the four North Carolina state championships, which had an estimated 1,000 people in attendance over a course of three very quick days. CCS VEX is extremely proud of, one of our very own, the Hickory Ridge Middle School Cyber Phantoms team will represent Cabarrus County Schools in just two short weeks at the World VEX Tournament in Dallas, Texas. While we are extremely proud of all of the growth of our VEX program here in Cabarrus County, we are going to continue to strive for 100% participation from all of our schools. We are really excited to launch the community-based teams for the 2025-2026 school year, which will support teams that do not currently have a VEX robotics coach, which we piloted this year at CVA, which was a very big success. So we are looking to expand that opportunity to other schools. The Cabarrus County VEX Program has been selected one of five schools across the United States to participate in a conference model program, which will allow us to exclusively host tournaments for our Cabarrus County VEX students, as well as our own championship, which will just be exclusive to our teams, not including private teams. In addition, continuing to increase the number of middle and high school VRC programs and expanding our summer camps to reach rising second and third graders are a priority, as well as starting to include LEGO First Robotics as well next year to kind of branch outside of the world of VEX and into some of the robotics curriculums that are out there. In an effort to achieve these goals, Cabarrus County VEX has proposed a $200 extracurricular student registration charge for all students in the competing in the VEX robotics programs across the different schools. The registration charge will cover team registration, which is $200 a team, as well as event registrations for events across the state, as well as team t-shirts and any extra equipment that we do not provide from Cabarrus County VEX Robotics. So our commitment to the program is what we give one school, we give every school. So that includes a base field for robotics, as well as a base kit. However, if you have seen a VEX robotics competition, you know that extra parts and materials are needed for competitive robotics. So that will also include helping those teams purchase that, that equipment. This registration charge was calculated based on the total operating cost from the 2024-2025 school year, which was $165,550. We do plan to have need-based scholarships through an application process for students who cannot afford that $200 extracurricular charge. And the current average fee for private teams in the state is roughly $750 a student. So while we continue to lead the charge here in Cabarrus County, there are many private teams across the state and that is the average that they charge a student to participate in a private team. The Cabarrus County VEX Program also continues to look for new ways and opportunities to increase funding and revenue, which will include seeking and applying for robotics grants, as we have done in the past, offering incentives to our community partners, such as summer camp scholarships for those that are willing to partner with us, creating sustainable food truck partnerships at our events, building income through the participation in the conference model pilot that we mentioned earlier. We are really excited to see what next year holds for Cabarrus County VEX Robotics and at this time, I will take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Board members?
Thank you so much. It is fun to see a competition and it is super impressive. And we even actually got to play with some of the toys at Griffin. And they're not toys, they're, you know, but it was, anyway, it's really impressive. And the students, when they're showing us what they do, it's just, it's, it's really impressive the, how everybody comes together. So I appreciate that. The question that I had was about the, the $200 fee. So if I'm new to robotics, first of all, how do I find out about the opportunities? Am I just coming through a club at the school? Is it my teacher gives me the heads up that I can join this team? Like, how does it function?
Great question. So one of the things we have in process for all of our schools with a coach or assistant coach is a consistent tryout process. And with that tryout process comes advertisement of the tryout window coming up, much like an athletic team would have. So that is advertised at the school level. We provide all of those advertisements for schools to alter for their school to fit their window in the month of August. So then from there, they submit an application and then there are tryouts with a rubric attached so that they select, not every school has the capacity, everyone is different. Some schools can hold, have 30 kids and some schools are just starting and can only accommodate five kids. So it kind of depends on the school and the capacity their program is at. So from there, they try out with a rubric and then selections are made from there. So they would find that out at the school level.
So based on your process, it sounds like we're not talking money until you've made it past a certain point. And then it's at that point that someone says, I have a need. I guess what I'm concerned about is I don't want anyone to not want to participate in VEX because they know I'm going to have to ask mom and dad for money that we don't have. So I just, I just want to make sure that, that, I know there's scholarships, but kids who have to deal with finances at home, they, yeah, they, they think this way. So I just want to make sure that money's not a topic until we know you've made it, we want you, and now we, we're going to do what we can to make sure you're on the team. Okay.
Dr. Kapicki, you want to respond to that?
Very good questions, good observations. I would assure the board and the community, as we have with just about everything we do in this district and this community, we will make sure we support all kids and any kid that has a need, we'll make sure they get to participate. And just a reminder, as, as Jennifer's pointed out, we are still picking up 75% of the cost of what it is to, to participate in the, in the team. So while the cost seems high, it's actually very minimal. It's only about a quarter of what it actually costs to, to run the VEX program. And, you know, we will keep a really close eye on those kids who are needed, need. And through conversation with the principals and our, our VEX coaches, we'll make sure that all, all children that want to participate get the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki.
So if you have a child that, that is interested, what So if you have a child that is interested, what is the first step that they do? Do they ask their classroom teacher if they're in elementary, or do they go to the principal? And where are these requirements that they would find out that they have to try out with?
They definitely can first go to their classroom teacher, who would be aware of the process and the tryout window. We've already started laying that out for next school year, lining up our coaches and that window. And then I think obviously the principal would also know the tryout window and what the processes and places they're involved in our decision-making as well.
Is there a window when you usually have these tryouts? I mean, parents don't want to wait too late, right?
It will start at the very beginning of school. Each school will set their timeline. Our due date is to have their team selected by the middle of September before the competition season gets underway. So it starts fast and furious once they come back to school.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Chidaway.
Well, we've had a lot of success, but I know there's a lot of folks that are responsible for that. But I can assure you firsthand that Ms. Calligan is a big part of that. She is still a teacher at heart, and it shows. Thank you for what you do.
And the board does appreciate all the work and the impact. Only five hundred and eight students is quite a, quite a thing. It's what I think that. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And we'll move on to six point oh four, which is our community eligibility provision for the 2025-26 school year. And we have Ms. Stephanie Allman. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give you a bit of an overview of the community eligibility program. I know we have a lot of new members, and you may not be familiar with the program at all. It is a U.S. Department of Agriculture program or provision that is optional for schools, and schools and districts can take advantage of it. So I'm going to give you an overview and let you know what our plans are for next year. And then I'll take some questions. So the Community Eligibility Program, or CEP, which is what everybody calls it, is an alternative method for determining eligibility for free or reduced meals in schools. The idea is that high-need schools can have an alternate way to qualify those schools and allow students to eat. They can offer breakfast and lunch, and of course, after-school snacks as appropriate. It does take away the burden of processing free and reduced applications in any school that offers this provision. They do use directly certified and categorically eligible data as of April first of the prior year, which I'll explain in just a moment, and it operates on a four-year cycle. So the minimum to participate is an identified student percentage of forty percent. I'll explain a little bit more what goes into that in the next couple of slides, from the prior school year. And identified students are the ones that are already eligible for free meals without having to fill out an income application through qualification for other programs. Schools and districts can participate on an individual school level, as a group of schools, or the entire district, as you've probably seen. And some districts have more than one grouping. They can arrange, it's very flexible to arrange it to the, suit the needs of the students. So who are identified students? Aside from a free and reduced application, there are two main ways for students to be eligible for free meals. The first one is direct certification, which sometimes has different meanings depending on the program that we're working with through education. But for school nutrition, direct certification comes through data matching for specific programs where families apply for them separately. For instance, food stamps, AKA FNS, the food distribution program on Indian reservations, which we do not currently have, and then TANF or WorkFirst. There is also a certain type of Medicaid that does qualify students for free meals, not all types of Medicaid, just specific ones, and then extended benefits. Any student who lives in a household, they do not have to be related, lives in a household with another student enrolled in our district that does participate and qualify through one of these direct certification programs can have benefits extended to them. The assumption is that the entire household could benefit from free meals. And then aside from direct certification, categorical eligibility is the other one. This is where the district certifies students based on a specific set of criteria: homeless students, migrant students, not necessarily, this gets confused a lot with immigrant students, that's not the same. This would be migrant, for instance, migrant farm workers or so, excuse me, or so on. Runaway foster, which has to be certified by the local Department of Social Services in whichever county, and then Head Start or Even Start or Principal Approved, which is very rare. To calculate the identified student percentage, it's pretty easy, straight math. You take the number of identified students, that is, those that are categorically eligible, plus those who are directly certified, divide it by the number of enrolled students, multiply it by a hundred, and there's your ISP. Now, the ISP has to be at least forty percent of either an individual school, if it participates individually, or of a group of schools, or of the entire district in order to participate. Now, I've been watching since January, there has been a recommendation for a change to the federal budget to move CEP participation from a minimum of forty percent to a minimum of sixty percent. So far, there's been no movement, but I will let you know if I hear anymore. I check on it pretty frequently, but there's not been anything really beyond some discussion on that. So where do free and reduced applications fit in here? This is the most common question I receive when talking about community eligibility. And bottom line is, it does not. This is only for, it's not only for, but it only counts the students that are categorically eligible or directly certified. It does not count the students who are free and reduced because of their family income application. Now, when you're counting the total free and reduced of a school, for instance, on eligibility reports that we publish on a monthly basis, that counts everybody, whether it's income application or the other two categories. That counts everyone. But when we're talking about CEP, it's purely the identified students. Now, how does ISP translate to CEP? Once we have calculated in April, how does it work? What do we use in order to figure out how much we are going to get reimbursed? And just a little parentheses here, just as a reminder, especially for new folks, we are, as a USDA program, the way we have our costs covered, so we are an enterprise fund, so we're expected to generate basically our entire budget, and most of that comes from federal reimbursements. So typically, depending on which the eligibility is of the student that purchases the meal, we get a certain reimbursement from the federal government. So the amount for a free student is, is one level, a little bit less for a reduced student, and then the lowest, which is about pennies on the dollar, for a paid student's meal. Same thing, breakfast and lunch, it's exactly the same. So in a non-CEP school, we use that student's eligibility for every meal that we serve. We calculate it, and the federal re government, federal government reimburses us for each one of those meals. In CEP schools, in the blue at the bottom, it is totally dependent on the school's eligibility. So if we do individual schools, or we group schools, or we do an entire district, and we typically will do a group of schools to maximize our reimbursement. It all works by whatever that school or group or district's ISP rate is multiplied by the multiplier, which is one point six. When you take the ISP and you multiply it by one point six, that's the percentage of meals that gets reimbursed at the free rate, at that highest reimbursement rate. The remaining amount of meals served at that school gets reimbursed at the paid rate. So it all, at that point, it all depends on who is actually coming through the line and obtaining a meal, as opposed to what they are on paper. This explains a little bit and gives a couple of examples about this one point six multiplier. So for instance, if fifty percent ISP at any given school or group, multiply that by one point six, that equals eighty percent. That means eighty percent of the meals that go across the line in that school get reimbursed at that highest rate, and the rest of the meals, the remaining twenty percent of meals gets reimbursed at the paid rate. Do you see a little bit of a chart on the right? As you can see, the magic number is between sixty and sixty-five percent. Down at the bottom, it's actually sixty-two point five percent, at which point every single meal that is served in that school is reimbursed at that highest rate. So that's always the goal for districts, to be sure that they cover costs. So in the blue box, you'll see SMP needs to cover every, any kind of a shortfall that might arise, because we're looking to have the costs covered through those federal reimbursements and cash sales. So we have to very carefully weigh that pros and cons to be sure that we are covering and that the feasibility of participating in this provision is fiscally sound, so that we don't put the program in jeopardy. And again, districts, a lot of times, they can play, put puzzle pieces together, and come up with the scenario that suits their student body the best. The CEP cycle, this is a lot of words on here, I'll let you guys read it later, but basically, April first of every year is the drop-dead date. That's the date that everything stops. And we count everybody in every category. We take care that we don't duplicate, because some people fall into more than one category. And we carefully double-check, triple-check to make sure, and we account it to each school. And then we look at it and see, would it be better to serve our children through the individual schools, through a group of schools, through the entire district, especially if districts have very high need across the board? It just really depends from year to year and what the district's makeup is. So the second bullet, districts are allowed to use that initial year's data, it's called your data year, for four years, even if the ISP drops. So if times are good and folks are not needing to apply for any assistance, then we can still benefit from that for four years, which is good, because that will get them through a lot of elementary school, definitely middle school or high school. It's a real benefit. They can also reestablish that data year in the meantime, because we calculate it every year, but we don't always have to reestablish. But we can take advantage of any increases in the ISP in the meantime, and that works to help the bottom line. There are times where you are required to reestablish a data year, and two of those apply, well, two of those, one definitely applies, and the second one is a side effect. The first one is redistricting. So this year, you don't really do it in advance, because you don't know who is going to end up where. So based on last summer's redistricting, we see that change in this April first, the one that I did at the beginning of last month. We see those changes in that data reflected. And then if you ever want to rearrange some groups, that would be, say, if you open a school, you close a school, you rearrange the attendance area for just one school in this group. If there's material changes, you need to reestablish that line, the data, to be sure that you are still working with accurate numbers. So based on all of that, after we have run all the data, double-checked, triple-checked to make sure everything is in order, we have had a look at our individual school ISPs. It is in the best interest to group our schools as a single group, because we can get the highest one point six multiplier at that, with that arrangement. So you can see on the right-hand side, the individual school ISP goes from seventy-seven all the way down to fifty-six point oh eight. However, if we treat this, and you, you don't average the percentage, you actually treat it as if it were one school, one giant student body. So if we were to calculate this as if it were one school, we would come up with a ISP of sixty point one seven, which is, as you can see, higher than any of those. What that means is you're taking advantage of the schools, the top two schools that are above sixty-two and a half percent, because you can't get more than a hundred percent. So we take advantage of that and increase the average for the entire group. That means that ninety-six point two seven percent of meals get reimbursed at the free rate. So we have done very similar to what we did in previous years, particularly last year. The ISP cutoff, for lack of a better word, was fifty-five percent or higher. That still puts us in a place where we can serve the children in a responsible fiscal manner and make sure that we're reaching as many children as we can with that. A little bit of the timeline. So April first, of course, is our deadline for collecting the data. We do report the data to DPI on April the eighth. At that point, a little bit after that, DPI publishes the data, makes it available to communities for all the state, all the districts across the state. Between April first and June thirtieth, each district evaluates how they would like to go about it, what they would like to do, what they are, what is feasible for them to do. And then by June thirtieth, we have to report our selection to DPI, what we are going to do. That's the last year allowed to make any selections. If you change your mind after that, you cannot join in the middle of the year. You can drop off in the middle of the year, which is not really recommended, but you cannot join anymore after that. So it's very important that districts go ahead and make their selection and notify DPI. Okay. That was a lot of information. Questions?
I'm sure there are. And we'll start with Mr. Chidaway.
Ms. Allman, I apologize if I may be asking you something that you don't have off the top of your head.
That's okay.
The, I'm trying to look for the right acronym here. Slide number six.
Yes.
Do you know what percentage of hours free and reduced students are, is it certified? No, directly versus?
Directly certified versus?
Versus?
Anything else?
Yes. I was just curious what that number is.
Are you also, you know what, this timed out, I'm going to have to do Duo if I'm going to get back to my computer. But I can, I can send that to you.
I was just, I was just curious what percentage, because...
I can tell you I have that. Let me make a note of that, and I'll send that to you.
Yeah, I was just, I'm just curious. We, we, we talk a lot about the applications, and, and I think, at least at the school level, you don't hear as much about the directly certified or directly...
No, you don't. Yes. Because we don't really differentiate. We use that total number.
Right, right, right.
And it is, it just depends on the year, which one, how close they are.
I was just curious. Okay.
Ms. Sessomar.
Thank you. It is complicated, so I might ask not the greatest questions, but...
It is okay. No judgment.
So, so the, the slide, so your creative math and regrouping?
Yes.
Gets us at sixty point seventeen?
Yes.
Percent. Okay. At the beginning, you were saying that the law might change.
Yes.
If it does, how would that affect our grouping? Or do you know? I'm guessing that's why you're watching it, but...
I am watching it because I don't know that we would have any notice. My hope is that many times USDA rules that come into place that don't have anything to budget will have a tiered implementation, you know, this year, like the sodium things. This year, it's this level, then lower and lower and lower. Things that have to do with budgets sometimes are, well, it wouldn't be spur of the moment, because we've, we've seen that it's a possibility, but it could very well be a instant change that we would not be able to control. So my hope would be that if that does take place, that it would be extended through the following school year. But since the federal budget ends in October, I have seen, just in past experience, I have seen provisions end at the end of October, which I hope that won't happen, but I really am just going to have to wait and see.
But, so the change you were saying was going from forty to sixty, or does that mean, because we're at sixty-one, I'm just trying to understand.
That would be the minimum, yes. And my hope is, they did not specify in the language of the recommended change for the budget, that that would be a change to a individual school or to a group. I'm hoping if they go by group, that that would not affect us at all. If they say, sorry, it's per individual school, then we do have probably half the schools, yeah, four, four out of eight of the schools would not be able to participate.
So, okay. Let's hope that doesn't change at the last minute. The other thing that you talked about was the four-year clock.
Yes.
So did we have to restart the clock because of redistricting last year? So now we're on a new?
We are, but we were already on, I think, year three, so we would have had to do it next year anyway.
Okay.
So, yes, if I remember correctly, and I don't have that in front of me. But yes, redistricting definitely does that. And anytime a change happens just to one school, if you have them grouped, you would have to change it. So say you closed a school, but there was no redistricting, you would have to change that. If you change the attendance area of one school within a group, now not, if you don't have them grouped, it's just that individual school, it's a little kind of convoluted, I'm sorry.
I, I, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Mills?
Is there, is there any change in the schools that are participating this year over last year, or is it exactly the same list?
Yes, there are two schools, Concord High and AT Allen, who were not at that minimum that we had set, that we had last year. They had dropped below. In general, the, most of the district dropped in ISP. There were two schools, there were four schools that went up materially, but two of them are neighborhood schools. The other two are program choice or magnet schools, as opposed to just neighborhood schools. I don't know if that's the right terminology, sorry.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Slankest?
So the students that you directly certify, where do you get that data from?
We actually do an import straight from the state that the Department of Health and Human Services shares that data. We match student ID numbers, and then we import it straight into our system.
Would that catch any students that maybe did not fill out the free and reduced lunch application?
Yes, absolutely, because they don't have any data on applications. That is only here, local, in our office. So we hope that families will apply for free and reduced meals, but they don't have to. If they, if they applied for SNAP or anything like that, they don't have to do a separate application for school meals.
Everybody got their questions answered? Thank you again for the detailed presentation, there's a lot to talk there.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to the 6.05, which is our monthly budget summary and board report by Mr. Philip Penn, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Kapicki. I want to provide a brief update sort of about where we are with the current school year. So as you can see from the memorandum, and I know a number of you saw this at the finance committee meeting last week, we approved a bit over the past, at the end of the, since the end of March. Two things worked against us a little bit, about $100,000 in higher overtime costs than we had previously modeled. That led to some pretty good conversations with Dr. Williams and Mr. Legrand around what's sort of driving some of that. The good news there is we did identify that there were a number of long-term vacancies in some positions at some of the schools that drove some of that, if not the majority of it. But I would say that the, there were a handful of schools that we do need to follow up with to make sure that they understand what the proper use of overtime is and is not. So there is some opportunity for improvement. We also are modeling for higher substitute costs for the current year. You can see we've spent about $2.9 million on subs so far in the current school year, about half of which impacted our local funds. And that included anytime that we had a teaching assistant serve as a sub for the day, because they get moved up to the A zero teacher rate for the day, which is about double the cost of what you would have for an outside serve coming in. We also did note that we had about $450,000 related to coverage for professional development that takes place on instructional day. So there's been some good conversations, I know that took place at the calendar committee level, within our own staff, working with Ms. Reeves on some things that are changing for next year to try to reduce that cost as we go forward. So if you're gonna find a silver lining of dealing with a deficit in a second consecutive year, it's we continue to make strides on becoming more efficient and keep turning over things that we say we need to challenge the way we've been doing things previously and what's, what's our go-forward look like instead. Now, good news is more than offsetting that, is we took another estimate at the end of the quarter around our healthcare expenses. You may recall from the memo that I had out at the end of February that we take worst-case scenario as we model out healthcare costs for the district. Those continue to improve to the tune of about a $390,000 improvement since the last time that we measured it. And then the last piece, and this takes a little bit of an explanation, is we've uncovered that back in the 2020, 2021 school year, the district transferred out of its fund balance and local funds, $1.6 million to Kids Plus. If you remember, that's the heart of the pandemic. There was directives out there to try and keep as many people employed as possible, with no money coming in from their fee structure. We did transfer those funds to keep people on payroll. But if you follow sort of what's transpired since then, some of it is a result of the bounce back after the pandemic, some of it has resulted ESSR funds. We found that Kids Plus is currently sitting on a cash balance of over $5 million right now. That's almost two years' worth of expenses. So we did have a conversation with the leadership team over Kids Plus, and they were fully in agreement in moving the $1.6 million back to us. In fact, they thought that they'd already done that, but it was an oversight on their part that it had never happened. We're also working with them on some restructuring, some of their cash activity, to mimic something that we did with the school nutrition program earlier this year, to try and earn up some higher interest on their cash going forward. But by bringing that $1.6 million, it gives us the ability to appropriate that as a fund balance appropriation in the current year, which then allows us to, in turn, offset some of the deficit that we have. So at this point, I'm calling the deficit estimate at about 6.8 million. That's down $6.2 million from where we talked about in January. And I think there's a number of activities that are going on right now that give me some greater hope that we're gonna solve this by the end of the school year. Correct that, end of the fiscal year, because we will need June to close this out. I, I think we are conservative in our non-payable accounts in terms of what we think will drop back to us from there, particularly since we're now past the April 17th deadline for submitting new requisitions. So, you know, everything that's coming in right now is doing, is really emergency needs, things that we need to do to keep the lights on, literally. Things that we need to do to keep diesel in the school buses, things of that nature. But it's very, very little requisition activity has basically dried up at this point. I would note that we have $7 million encumbered on purchase orders that are locally funded, $2 million of which relate to purchase orders that were created prior to January 1st. So there's some old ones that are sitting out there. My team is working very closely with those that, department owners and schools that own those POs to try to close them out, particularly if there's funds that are, that are left on, on them. If you close out a purchase order and it's still got funds available to it, it reverses back to the expense line from which it was drawn in the first place, which therefore gives us the opportunity to use those funds as an offset to the deficit. If we could slide to the next page, please. Thank you. So we do continue to work on making sure that all of our available funding, both on the state level and the federal level, is utilized the best way possible by moving funding around for certain personnel that was worth about $200,000. We continue to work with the charter school allotment that we received from the county to make sure that's as trued up as it can be, particularly because we realize that the decline in fines and forfeitures actually impacts what we pay to the charters as well. That's not gonna be a big savings, but at this point, we're turning over everything. Further update to that, I did hear back from the county last week. They're trying to get a meeting with the clerk of the court on or about May 12th to kind of get into a little bit more of a deep dive as to what's impacted our fines and forfeiture funds this year. For those of you that are hearing the issue for the first time, we have been budgeting $2.2 million into this year. I, I think we're gonna end the year at about $900,000. So we want to understand sort of how that dried up and why, because it doesn't fit the trend over the past several years. Lastly, some good news on the Medicaid front. We did hear from my contact at PCG, which is the external consultant that we use for Medicaid. And we also did get by certified mail the proposed settlement for the 23-24 year. There's every indication that those funds are gonna drop to us by June 30th, which would allow us to use the funds in the current year to the tune of $890,000. So that would be a big help for us in terms of offsetting the rest of the balance. Now, my current estimate, and this is excluding what we had in the aforementioned Kids Plus, was 3.5 and 3.9 million in fund balance. We do need to continue to generate savings through the end of the year. And it's my hope that we can exceed that, would allow us to carry over fund balance into the 24-25 fiscal year. So still some more work to go, but I feel like we're in significantly better shape than we were three months ago, as we first started attacking the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Do we have questions? Ms. Escobar.
Thank you for doing all this and the finance committee and the updates and all that. This is not part of your memo, but a question that I have and that parents are asking, because it's showing up in Parent Square, which is related to deficits for lunch balances. So I recognize that you might not have the data right now, but my question is, is at this point, if, if by the end of the school year, if the balance isn't paid by the parents, what are, what's a school principal to do? Where's that money gonna come from? Because we don't have any.
We don't, and typically that's coming from school funds to pay that balance. We are tracking, the person who's just at the podium concerned.
I can answer, I can answer a question right now.
Dr. Kapicki?
So, so this has been an ongoing issue and problem for years. And the way that it is rectified every year, right now, there's $127,138 in, in deficit for lunch balances. That's across 44 schools. Some schools, the balance is significant, others are not. We are trending at about $10,000 less this year than we were last year. So we were in a worse situation last year. Some of the things that Stephanie has implemented and with the work of Phil Furr through some communication tactics and working with Dr. Bowers and folks in his department, we've kind of been able to, while I know $127,000 is large, it's less than what it was. We showed some improvement. Usually, not usually, what happens is we will get community donations. People will donate either anonymously or through talking with the principals, they'll donate it. But ultimately, the school itself is on the hook for the balance. So this is something that we continue to talk about on a consistent basis. When we meet the principals and discuss it, it's a, it's an ongoing issue and a problem that we're continuing to just battle, to be honest with you.
I, I appreciate that, the answer. And I have noticed, I try to keep tabs of all of our schools, what they post on social and stuff, and some schools have shown off checks that they've gotten from the community. And I can say my schools, that I get notices from as a parent, they're also making concerted efforts where, you know, you can't go on the school trip or you can't do the thing unless everything's up to, is paid in full. So I appreciate the creativeness, I appreciate Phil Furr and his communications on Parent Square, because from what I understand, if you do have an outstanding balance, you'll get a personal message, not just a, a big one. But I would like, if there's any way that we can support our principals, if, if we can, if we can get an update maybe at our next meeting of, of where they're at, so that if we want to bring this to the attention to the community, we could do so in our meeting. Just give it a platform so that we can just lift them up.
Let's add that to a finance committee update too, please.
Yeah, in perspective, I'm not, I'm not excusing the debt, the debt is a significant number, but if you round it out, if you average out, it's about $2800 to $3,000 per school across 44 schools. You know, some schools owe nothing. You know, some schools, there is a report, I believe we do share with the board, that kind of highlights where, where those, those larger deficits are. So again, we will continue to work hard at bringing that down. Usually, around graduation time, it significantly drops, but the ultimate, the principals have to handle those balances.
Thank you. Any questions related to the memo and this report? Mr. Mills?
The $2.9 million we spent on subs, do you know if that's, if that's, if that increases from long-term subs having to cover unfilled teaching positions?
It's everything, so it's the all-in cost for every, every instance that we would have.
Okay, but it's significantly higher than?
It's higher than the forecast that we've had. I would say it tracks pretty closely to what we've had historically.
Okay. The other part is the $450,000 related coverage for professional development. I appreciate you taking a very granular look and, and the belt tightening. My question on this is though, the language says related coverage for professional development conducted during instructional days, which means those costs could be largely avoided. So the teachers are required to have professional development.
Correct.
If they're not doing the professional development during the instructional day, when are they expected to do the professional development?
So I think this is something that we're taking, that's a great question. Something we're taking a hard look at as to, are there better ways to offer professional development? So one of the things we're going to do over the break is to take a hard look at, what professional development are we offering, when are we offering it, and how much are we asking teachers to take on each year? So it's something that we're taking a hard look at as we move forward into the next school year.
I appreciate that. My two, my concerns there are twofold. One, that this cost reduction isn't actually just sort of a transfer to teachers, because now they're having to do that on their free time, on their personal time, as opposed during instructional time. And then secondarily, I would like for teachers to be able to choose their professional development. And sometimes that may mean there's going to someplace outside of the school day where they would need a sub. This seems like this is maybe limiting their options in terms of what professional development they can choose.
Sometimes it's possible to do that. You know, keep in mind, sometimes there are some initiatives that are either, either funded or unfunded mandates from the state that come down that kind of tie our hands. But I can assure you that this is something that we're looking over with our staff and especially with the curriculum department, Mrs. Reeves and her folks. So we will come back to in the summer and kind of give you more of an updated report as to what the professional development will be for the school year. So you'll have a really good look as to what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tretaway?
Yeah, to piggyback on that, I, I read that as staff development during instructional days as opposed to workdays.
Correct. I tend to use instructional days, because it means, to me, it says kids are here in the building.
Right, right, right.
We're pulling out a teacher out of the building.
Right.
We need a sub to cover for that teacher.
Right, right, right. So it's not necessarily they're doing it outside of the workday.
No, I try to use language that would be more broadly accessible to people.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, that was the last of our reports on the section. Now we're gonna move on to section seven, which is items for consent or action at our meeting next week. And the first one we have up here is 7.01, which is our 2024, 25 budget amendment number seven.
Yes, indeed, lucky number seven. This is actually a fairly short one compared to some of the other amendments that we have here before, before in the past. It only affected three of our funds in the past month. Within the state public school fund, we had an increase of $314,000 and some change, mostly as an increased allotment for EC students and an increase in our transportation allotment of $35,000, so a minor adjustment there. Within local funds, there was an overall decrease of $18,000 related to some of the ongoing expensive reductions that we've been taking. And this is one we, you know, we book it directly to our, our fund balance, not some of the other activities that are going on. And lastly, in federal, an increase of $494,000 and change that reflects the FAST grant, which is a mental health support grant, of $490,000 and some additional IDA funds, as they cleaned up that number a bit, by $4,788. Now, you may have seen in the news recently that the current administration at the federal level has proposed cutting some of the mental health support for schools that's out there to the tune of about a billion dollars. Now, what, we understand, if we're talking to two different contact points at Department of Public Instruction, is that the $490,000 we received this year is safe. So we're gonna continue to use those dollars through the end of the federal fiscal year at the end of September, and that should be fine. There's some concern about what the go-forward looks like, though. So for this year, we're good. For next year, we're taking a little bit of a wait and see to see how that plays out. But, but the initial $400,000 that just, that dropped to us within the past month is fully accessible to us. So overall, an increase across all our funding sources by just over $791,000 that pushes our budget across all the different funds to $546 million for this year.
Questions, comments, Ms. Escobar?
So the, the money that just dropped?
Yes.
You said through September?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the end of the federal fiscal year.
Oh, right, she said October, okay.
Yeah.
Right, it starts, okay. Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Are we comfortable, we have enough information, and are comfortable moving this forward? And consent agenda, yes, consent? Consent on this side? Okay, so we'll move that item to our consent agenda for next week.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penn, next up is 7.02, policies for first read. We have Dr. Sandy Ward come into the podium.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Chair, Caleb. It's nice to see you all. I'd like to first start out saying Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of my colleagues out there, representing and doing great work on behalf of students. I think that's a big deal. I'll jump right into, I believe I'm doing policies on first read. I have three this evening. Did not receive any questions, so I will jump into some explanation.
receive any questions, so I will jump into some explanation. All right, the first policy is 1510, 427270, which is on school safety. And the reference for these policy changes are State Law 24-57 and General Statute 115C. So there are some recommended and required changes in this policy. Any questions on those changes?
That was the one that they're doing this work anyway, so it's the stuff we're already doing. We're adding to the balance.
Yep. No questions? Okay. All right, the second policy we'll look at for first read is the Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety. And we are looking at revising a section to align with State Board of Education rules, which became effective, which will be effective July 2025. And this will cross-reference the next policy I present, which is 7130. So any questions on 42407312, child abuse and related threats to child safety?
Okay, looks like we're all quiet with that. Are we good to move this one forward? These three, right, to consent? Yes, yes. Okay, looks like we had a bit of head shakes. So we'll move that to consent, and we'll move on to the second read, which is-
All right, second read. We are revisiting attendance. We talked about for the last two months where we're proposing change in the middle school definition to align with, what is that, elementary?
Can we bring up those changes to show them again to the public?
Sure.
Okay, any further questions on the attendance one?
No, because we talked about it.
We have talked about it, so we're okay with consent that it will be effective next week then. So, all right, looks like we got head shakes, thumbs up. Okay, that'll be on consent as well. Thank you very much for the time.
You're welcome.
And moving right along. So 7.04, we have Mr. Carl Seng coming up to talk to us about the 2025-26 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability Models.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Kupicki, and members of the board and viewing audience. School performance grades, as you are likely aware, reflect the state accountability model from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. This is the A, B, C, D, F model that is used for traditional schools across the state. However, NCDPI also allows or affords the flexibility for our alternative schools to use an alternative model. We are recommending that this model be used for the Opportunity High School and for Performance Learning Center. As I mentioned, in the traditional model, school performance grades are based on two factors. Eighty percent of that score is reflected by achievement, and then 20% of that score is reflected on growth. As I mentioned, there's an alternative model that we have the flexibility to use for these two schools. So option, they provide three different options for us to use. Option A is the same as the traditional model. The traditional model, again, is based on 80% achievement, 20% growth. Baked within that 80% achievement are our EOG and EOC scores, so the number of students that achieve a proficient score, our English learner progress, which is the number of students that demonstrate progress moving towards their grade level on the English learner assessment, the graduation rate, math course rigor, which is the number of students that take Math III by the end of their junior year, and then outcomes on the work keys and ACT results. The other 20% of this metric would be made up by growth. That is using our EVAS formula, which stands for Educator Value Added Assessment System. As a quick tutorial on that, every single student is given a projection if they have taken assessments within the state of North Carolina. How students fare on those projections is compared to the rest of the state. And then if you do well, then you exceed growth. If you do not meet those projections, you do not meet growth. So that is the traditional model. These schools have the option of using that traditional model. Option B is a change in the formula. So they create a component called student persistence. So this is the percent of students who remain enrolled in the North Carolina public school. Obviously, these are alternative programs, so remaining enrolled at some school is an objective for these students and for these schools. Achievement is minimized from 80% down to 20%, so it's still a factor. How students do on state tests matter. Keep in mind, for schools like our Opportunity School, students are coming and going every nine weeks. So it's difficult to make, obviously, the schools are focused on academics, but the impact that those students have on those assessments is minimized because they could be there for as short as nine weeks. And then they overstate the growth. So how students progress and how students achieve relative to their projections is now counted at 60%. So option A would be to remain at the exact same traditional model as the rest of the state. Option B, which is the recommendation, is to move towards this alternative model. There is an option C, which is create your own model for these schools and get that approved by DPI. Both of these schools have operated in option B for at least the last four years. There are 940 schools across the state that are alternative schools that operate on one of these models. So you can see, relative to the traditional accountability model, option B decreases the emphasis on standardized assessment indicators in favor of an emphasis on student persistence and growth. So the recommendation is for both of these schools to move towards option B. This does require school board approval so that we can submit that documentation to NCDPI and set it up for calculations for next school year.
And we do this every year?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chidaway?
Yeah, I'm in favor of adding this to our consent. But I do have a question. If a student transfers to the Opportunity School now, where does that student fit in this model? Or not in the model, but in Cabarrus County schools?
Depends on where they finish the school year.
It's where they finish. So no matter when they transfer.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Mills?
Just so I'm real clear, this is just the school's grade. This is not affecting the students at all. This doesn't affect graduation requirements. Nothing like that is affected.
That's exactly right. So consider that the school accountability model, that A, B, C, D, F, has federal implications, right? So based on some federal laws, there are all kinds of ramifications about whether a school receives an F or is low performing. And this basically provides a separate model for those schools, because again, their focus is as much on students completing school, which is that persistence component, in addition to obviously taking and passing those tests. So it has no implications for the students' scores.
The only implications are really on the funding, because parents aren't moving to get near these schools. So that grade is not affecting those sorts of decisions.
That's correct. Obviously, I should mention PLC obviously has program choice implications as far as opting into that school. But as far as geographical boundaries, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for sharing this. We had an opportunity to hear stories from the Performance Learning Center and go there and really just be so impressed why, how they wrap their hands around these kids who are going through lots of different things for different reasons for being there and being so successful. Yes, sometimes just graduating is a huge achievement. And so anything that we can do to lift up these schools and make it easier for them, I'm in favor of. The question that I do have, though, is what is the current letter grade for both of these schools?
So interestingly, the PLC's grade right now for last school year, I did not track previous school years before last year, but for last school year, PLC would have scored a B. Their school grade is largely dependent on their grad, last year was largely dependent on their graduation rate. So consider that the number of students in each of these categories is how you record your grade. So if you're on option A, and you have just a handful of students taking an actual EOC, but then you have a lot of students that factor into that graduation, that it's weighted towards that. Last year, PLC had more students in their senior class graduating than taking their assessments. So that overweighted graduation. So as a school, it would have, they would have actually turned out with a B grade. They do amazing things at PLC. If you guys were able to attend last year's graduation, it was maybe the most touching graduation speech that I personally heard. So they do fantastic things. Obviously, there are subgroup ramifications as well for this. I can't speak to what each subgroup score was for the PLC. Obviously, again, some of that includes some federal designation. So if you're labeling this for the entire school, and one subgroup ends up not scoring as well due to a smaller number of students, then it could include some federal designation associated with that subgroup score. If I'm not mistaken, last year, Opportunity scored a letter grade of C. Again, there were some subgroup differences. So there were some subgroups at Opportunity School that did not score a letter C that may have landed on a TSI or other federal designation list.
Okay, any further questions? Are we comfortable? We have enough information to move this to consent? Yes, yes. Okay, that'll be on consent for next week as well. Thank you for your time, for the explanation for that. And our next one is 7.05, Cabarrus County Schools Integrated Program Purchases, CNI and Student Services. So, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Superintendent Kupicki. Thank you for your time and consideration as we present the proposed integrated purchases for the programs of Panorama, Instructure, and I Ready. We have partnered with each of these vendors for at least three years and have consistently evaluated their value and academic return on investment. Today, we will outline a proposed multi-year partnership with each vendor that is designed to strengthen school support, enhance student outcomes, and yield the cost savings to Cabarrus County schools. By securing a multi-year agreement paid annually, we aim to ensure stability and continuity for our schools, staff, and students, especially as we navigate the challenges of rising vendor costs. These agreements will allow us to lock in rates and better plan for our future student needs. It is also important to note that the funding for these programs has consistently come from state and federal sources specifically allocated for instructional resources and tools that support student achievement. This will remain the case moving forward. We look forward to discussing how these continued partnerships can contribute to our academic success. And so as we begin today, I just want to open us up with the work around the evidence-based research of the opportunity makers. We've been using a lot of this research as we move forward with school leaders to navigate change, specifically in the areas of sense of belonging and student wellness, as well as academics. And we'll be sharing a little bit more with you today around how these products support with that. As I shared with you as I began this presentation, we have had a longstanding partnership with several of these vendors, specifically in looking at Instructure and I Ready, and what we have done as a district. And I think it's important to note specifically when we talk about academic return on investment prior to our partnership with Instructure, Cabarrus County Schools was ranked overall a 35. And immediately following, in the years of 2019, we actually ranked 15 in the state. So making that specific jump, while there is no necessarily key ingredient, we certainly believe that attributes to the data that our schools use support this. And since then, post-pandemic, we have ranked 13 in the state of North Carolina, continuing to make specific strides in terms of academic return on investment in these And so attached in the board docs, as well as here, you will find the multi-year contract specifically broken down for Instructure, Panorama, and I Ready.
And as you can see here, we're looking at three things that we want to accomplish by purchasing all of these products. And of course, that's the belonging piece, where we want to create an emotional climate for learning that activates our students' ability to excel, the consistency, schools delivering good teaching, and grade level content for all students, and then having coherence, building a unified instructional program that we can use over time. So that's why we're looking at an extended three-year contract. All right, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Panorama Education. So as you see here, Panorama Education brings together critical areas of student support: student wellness, behavior, attendance, academics, and post-secondary planning. There are three products in the platform that we'd like to purchase: Panorama Student Wellness Surveys in the Playbook, Panorama Pathways, and Panorama Success. We have been using the Student Wellness Survey Screener and Playbook for the last three years. The Survey Screener is designed to determine how students are doing in the areas of supportive relationships, positive feelings, emotional regulation, social awareness, and sense of belonging. The Playbook is a professional learning library that connects educators with hundreds of instructional resources and interventions across academics, behavior, and life skills to support students holistically and within an MTSS framework. At this time, I'm going to invite Adam Auerbach, the principal of Concord High, and Assistant Principal Jeremy Hatchen to come to the podium to share their experience with using the Panorama Student Wellness Survey.
Good evening. At Concord High School, we use Panorama and the data that comes from it a lot. So this year, we had a goal to increase our sense of belonging by 5%. One of our school improvement goals. And we put that in there and did some specific things to actually make that happen. So Mr. Hatchen can say a little bit more about what we did.
Yes, and the information we get from these surveys is very important to us, especially when students tell us that they don't feel a sense of belonging at the school. So what we'll do with that information is we'll work with our MTSS coordinator, our graduation coach, take that list of students, and apply some interventions. Some of them are as simple as what we call two-by-tens, where we assign those students to a staff member, often strategically, to meet with a student 10 times for two minutes. Whenever I've had students to do this, I have a chess table in my room. I call them in, just say, "We're trying to get closer to some students. Get your feedback on the school." Start building that relationship. A lot of times, the outcome is, I can now call them by name in the middle of the hallway. And they can call me by name, and they feel that sense of belonging. We'll then take those students, and we'll pair them with our spiders of the month, and we'll have pizza with the principals, where Dr. Auerbach and all the assistant principals will meet with our four spiders of the month, some Panorama students, and start building those connections that way as well. If we think that we need more interventions with some of these students, we have our success coaches that will put them on one of their caseloads to help them continue to make connections with the school.
So we looked at the data, too, to see who our students were that were showing a low sense of belonging. We pulled them in, and we really worked with, our school psychologists pulled them to try and figure out what were some trends that we saw. You know, they were new to the school. They didn't grow up through the feeder pattern, or they might have some other things that we could look at. So with everything we did this year, we did meet our school improvement plan goal. We increased from the beginning of the year to the end of the year by 5%. And Panorama is a tool that we use to really build a sense of belonging, because at Concord High School, that's what we do. It's all about relationships and sense of belonging that we have there. And this tool helped us.
Okay, can we ask a question of the guests?
Before you go, thank you so much. First of all, thank you for coming and waiting through this whole thing. I really appreciate it. You've got a long day. You start real early. So thank you so much. So when you say the Panorama data, do you, how many times a year are you asking these kids to, you know, just check in?
Sure. There's three survey windows. We take one at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. So at Concord, our goal was from the beginning of the year to the end of the year that we wanted to see it. So we were up 2% from beginning to middle, and up 3% from the middle to the end of the year as well. We actually went up in all five areas, but our school improvement plan goal was just around sense of belonging.
Well, it's awesome. And I will say, it's nice to know. I see the kids who win these awards on your social, and I didn't realize that you're like tapping them to be, to help out as well. So I think it's just great that you're taking your high flyers and putting them to use. And it's just awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
The goal is to understand what we have in front of us. Any questions for Melanie?
In what class are they taking these surveys, and how are they asked to take the surveys? Is this completely voluntary? Do the parents know about it? All that kind of good stuff.
Sure. So we do ours during homeroom. I can't speak to every other school. We have homeroom every Wednesday. That's where we do P2. We do all the different surveys and things like that. So that's done there. It's voluntary, but expected. So, and then our students that do not take it, we will call them if they need to make it up. But we have consistently, since we started taking this, had over 90% participation when we get this. Our data feels pretty valid that when over 90% of the kids take it each time, it's pretty accurate. And then there's a third question you said, I don't know.
Do the parents know that they're going to take it?
So we send out stuff in our newsletters, and I think the district sends it out, too, when we're in those survey windows as well.
Okay, Dr. Kupicki wants to add something?
Yes, just follow up with that. But to be clear, if a student does not want to take it, they have the option to opt out. It is not a- the option to opt out. There is not, it is not a mandatory survey.
Right.
I'm clear on that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't force them to.
I understand that. What I'm saying to you, the parents have the right to opt. I want to make sure that our community understands that they can opt out if they choose to. It is not mandatory and that the option is, it's up to the parents to decide if they want the child to take it or not.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we're clear in our communication with that to our parents.
Yes.
That they can opt out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Auerbach?
Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Kipicki, because I am not at Concord, but I did get some concerns from parents where they felt like their students were being forced to complete the survey. It was mandatory. So thank you for clarifying that, that no survey is ever mandatory for students. So, thank you, Dr. Kipicki.
Are we good for letting them go? Thanks, guys. I first of all.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other product that we're purchasing is called Panorama Pathways. And the Pathways program was initially purchased through a grant and utilized for the first time in the spring of 2024. And this is a program used at the high school level by counselors and graduation coaches to ensure students are ready for post-high school enrollment, careers or enlistment. The automated program makes certain that students are on track for graduation through auditing of credits, coursework and student schedules. Currently, there are three state pathways to graduation, and this program tracks every student to be sure that she or he has the appropriate coursework and credits necessary to graduate. Our school counselors love this program as they are able to use it for academic advising as well as to catch students with missing credits and courses. And then we, this leads us to the last one that we are, would like to purchase, and that is our Student Success. And it's a comprehensive data dashboard and MTSS platform. And this year, our middle schools piloted it. And we're going to hear about that in just a few minutes from one of our assistant principals at Harris Road. And it's a one-stop shop where everything is housed in a single user-friendly platform with real-time data for teachers and administrators.
Absolutely. So as Dr. Ross shared, this year, we had the opportunity to pilot this model with our middle schools to see whether or not this met the unique needs that specifically we had heard from school teachers and leaders in terms of being able to provide comprehensive data tools. And so as we move forward, our recommendation is actually to purchase this for kindergarten through eighth grade as we move into the 25, 26 school year. And with me this evening is Ms. Tish Williams, who is our Assistant Principal at Harris Road. And she's going to share a little bit more from a school-based perspective on how this tool has supported both teachers and leaders at the school in providing supports for students.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members and Dr. Kipicki. Again, I am Tish Williams, Assistant Principal at Harris Road Middle School, and I'm also the MTSS contact. So thank you for listening to me for these few minutes here. As we strive to elevate academic achievement across all student groups, it is essential that our teachers and the MTSS leadership team are equipped with accurate and actionable data. Tools like I Ready make this possible by allowing our teachers to personalize instruction, deliver targeted interventions and strategically monitor students' progress in response to those interventions. This data-driven approach ensures that instruction is both efficient and impactful. When combined with platforms like Panorama, which provide a broader view of student wellbeing, we can support the whole child academically, behaviorally, socially and emotionally. The gift of time is precious to our teachers. Therefore, reducing time spent on manual data collection is imperative. Panorama and I Ready diagnostic empower our teachers to focus on what matters most, delivering high-impact instruction that accelerates student growth and support equitable outcomes across a diverse student population. At Harris Road, we recognize that our students are more than data points. They are individuals with unique academic behavior, social, emotional needs. That's why collectively with I Ready, we utilize Panorama to support the whole child. Panorama's expanded data platform offers a comprehensive view of each student, helping us identify trends, track wellbeing and make informed decisions. During our MTSS team meetings, which includes teachers, counselors, grade level administrators and the MTSS contact, we focus on problem solving and creating the best interventions for students. As we engage in discussions that teachers express such as absenteeism, assignment submission, behavior, failing grades and social, emotional challenges, the Panorama Dashboard has been a helpful tool offering a comprehensive snapshot of these concerns in one view. With this tool, we were able to dig deeper than a student absenteeism and work completion challenges. We were able to create intervention solutions and small groups. In addition, Panorama offers a personalized AI tool under the student overview that allows teachers to be effective and beneficial and capture data in a matter of seconds. This data supports our wonderings, but yet provides information on the why. By leveraging the Panorama Dashboard and I Ready platform, we achieve the following improvements. Our sense of belonging increased to 55%. 80% of students that were in Tier Two interventions grew in reading. 85% of our students who received Tier Two interventions demonstrated growth in math. In conclusion, I Ready diagnostic and Panorama tools are more than just assessments and surveys. They are a catalyst that informs instruction, teachers and SIS team members to proactively identify students of concern and guide timely, targeted interventions that fosters both academic success and a sense of belonging. I strongly encourage the board to consider the importance of I Ready and Panorama as an essential resource that helps all students reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you for that overview and story. Any comments?
Thank you so much. So is it fair to say then that by having this data and getting to it faster, you're able to have the human part last longer because you're not taking so long? So that meeting is way more productive because you have so many people in the room that know quickly what to address?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And so as you can see here, this is just a little bit, when we talk about academic return on investment, certainly we want to be thinking about through, through our partnerships. And so with the Panorama Data Dashboard, meaning the SLE Level 2 form of evidence specifically around being able to move the needle forward. So we've heard from our middle schools in our pilot that this is very valuable because it puts time back in the hands of our teachers to be able to make informed decisions and target specific interventions based on the root cause as opposed to manually putting together thousands of points of data to be able to make the most informed decision.
All right, from this slide, well, this slide just gives you the benefits of the Panorama Success Dashboard. As you can see, it elevates your MTSS. It gives you that data in one place. It gives you better student outcomes. And then, of course, one of the things that Ms. Escobar pointed out is that is a time savings. Because you can imagine when you have different data sets, you have to have different laptops pulled up. And this allows you to have one, everybody can be looking at the same screen with all of the data on it. When I was a principal and we had MTSS meetings, I had to have one person pulling up Power School for attendance, one person pulling up grades, one person and you were looking at so many different screens and it took quite some time to gather it all to discuss. So this puts it all in one, one place. So it does reduce that, that workload for the MTSS team as well as teachers.
And so this just gives you a snapshot of what the interface that many of our schools see. So as I'm individually problem solving with a student, we can specifically track trends and patterns, whether it's related to academics, attendance, behavior, we're talking about student wellbeing, or specifically benchmark data, be able to make the most informed decisions possible. So for instance, we might have a child that is struggling academically in reading, and we're talking about putting that child in a 95 rap intervention for reading, but really the challenge was that the child had missed, you know, 22 days of school. So chronic absenteeism is where we want to start specifically to be able to make sure that we can get that student here. So, you know, it makes us also work more efficiently with the human capital that we have in our building, which is incredibly important.
As you can see here, this student is doing really well and her, her card is mostly green. But if a student wasn't doing as well, you would see more reds and yellows, which would alert the team that we need to look in a little bit closer at the student.
And as Ms. Williams shared, additionally, in, in the Panorama, Panorama Data Dashboard, we spoke specifically, she spoke to I Ready as well as benchmark data being put in, into place. And so as you can see here, this is just an example of how those data points would also feed into this. So when we're talking about integrated package, a resource purchase, that is why, because all of these data sets live together to help drive and inform student achievement and being able to support customizable individual student supports. None of them live in isolation. Typically, we're constantly trying to triangulate data to make the most informed decision for students. And so with that being said, I would love to introduce Ms. Dawn Rainey, and she is here from Bogart Elementary School as the proud principal. And she has done some remarkable things with her school as it relates to leveraging I Ready as well as our benchmark data, which we call Instructure, to be able to support student achievement. And so she is here this evening to share a little bit from the principal experience and how these tools have helped her.
Awesome. I'm really going to share from the teacher perspective because I'm still a teacher at heart. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So some of the great things that are happening at Bogart, I will assure you that our teachers use I Ready and Mastery Connect on a daily basis. It's their go-to because it quickly puts together the data that they need to analyze to determine the next steps for student instruction. One of the things that my teachers really love about Mastery Connect is that we use that for our big, big benchmarks from the county level so we can compare data across schools. But we also utilize that at our school for our exit tickets and our weekly check-ins. And our teachers have control over the questions that go into those. So they can target a specific skill that their students are working on in the classroom, or if they see that they have a deficit from our benchmarks, we can then target that one skill on a weekly basis to see how it's progressing over time, which is what we've really done with our data. After our last benchmark data dig, the county provides us a protocol. So all of the schools go through the same protocol to look at the data. They look at what is their problem of practice at their individual school, and then they break down that data and determine MTSS steps for our students, who needs intervention, who needs targeted supports, who needs acceleration because they're doing really well. And at Bogart this year, what we were able to do with that that's made a significant difference is our teachers looked at our data from benchmarks and determined how far we were from our proficiency goal. We're aiming for 80% of our students to be proficient in third grade reading and fourth grade math. Those are two areas we're really working on. And so when we saw our proficiency gap from our benchmark two in particular, our teachers then said, not only is this how much more proficiency we need to get there, that percentage, but we actually put student names and we attach student names to that data and we're able to target, like Dawn Rainey needs this intervention because she is so close to proficiency. And if we can give her this, we can get her there. So that was a really significant way that we saw an increase in our data using Mastery Connect. The other tool that our teachers love is the I Ready. One of the things that's really great about I Ready is it quickly groups the students based on their performance on the diagnostic. So our teachers use the diagnostic. Our students take that three times a year as well. And then we can use that data to determine our small group instruction, which is really nice. Not only does it group the students for the teachers, but it provides ready-made lessons that are research-based. So our teachers are not out searching for extra supports because of course, we have our core curriculum, but we still need those supports for that small group instruction. And we want our teachers using research-based materials that are already approved. So I Ready does that for us and allows us to group our students in that way. The other thing that our teachers have latched on to this year in third grade is a portion that's new to I Ready called magnetic reading, which provides an extra level of support. And we target students' interventions in reading because our goal is for all students to be literate because we know that's the foundation of all that they're doing. I'm proud to say that after putting these supports into place at Bogart, we are above all of our EVOs projections for the year. We're, we're on pins and needles because this is the week, right? So we're ready for testing, but we know that our students, we've given them so many supports throughout the year, and we've tracked their progress and put every support into place that we can, that we know with the support they're going to just do wonderful as we approach our EOG season.
Any questions for Ms. Rainey?
Thank you for sharing that. The question, and I've asked this before to, to Ms. Reeves, which is, you take this data, right? How does it follow the student? So does it stay with them all through the, I guess you get, you get them six years, right? So do you, are you using it for, for that entire time? Or does it start fresh the next year?
So it really depends on if a student is in our MTSS protocol. So if we have a student who's receiving intervention support, yes, it would go with them and it would travel. Otherwise, our teachers use the EOG data from year to year to look at. But any student that we're having concerns about or that needs like a Tier Two support or a Tier Three support, then that data would, we would be able to look at that and track how they're doing.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rainey. And as you've heard, our, our schools use this data to make informed decisions every day. And one of the things we like to say is really when you get to the end of the year in EOG and EOC, it's autopsy data. There's not a whole lot that you can do with that data to intervene for a child. And so the ability to have Mastery Connect or our benchmarks, which is under the umbrella of Instructure, which is the company that is attached to the quote, it really is able to give us real-time, in-the-moment data around how students are mastering on grade level standards throughout the course of a year. Additionally, after a benchmark, it gives us the ability to track a projected proficiency data for a child. So for instance, if you have a child that's projected to be proficient and then one of their benchmarks, their tract is not proficient, we can intervene immediately and determine the skill sets needed for that child to be pulled in a small group and receive that instruction that they need to get them right where they need to be. With that being said, the one thing that I did want to share is Instructure is a very large company. And so in this quote, you're going to actually three, see three different items. These are three items that we have used for years historically. And even up until last week, I had a teacher saying, please don't take this away because I will lose all of my classroom assessments if we don't purchase this. And so with that being said, I think it's important to share out, the first of which is Mastery Connect. You heard about that previously. That is a tracker that you could use at both a school level, but also individual student level to track standards mastery. So that's on-grade level standards that are color-coded, and I'm going to show you in a moment what that looks like. And that is a valuable tool that many of our teachers across the county use. And in addition to that, In Mastery Connect is what's called the Item Bank. So that's actually individualized on the quote, and that gives us access to high-quality instructional assessment items that have been vetted and make sure that they are currently aligned to the rigor and the standard course of study that is assigned by North Carolina Department of Instruction. And so with that, teachers can create their own checks for understanding or what we call quizzes on a daily or weekly basis to monitor student understanding and be able to make real-time decisions in their classrooms. And definitely a valuable tool. Without that tool, teachers would have to create their own quizzes, or in this instance, they would have to recreate quizzes if we did not purchase that Item Bank. And then last but not least, they have what's called the MVPA. That's what Instructure calls it in Cabarrus County. We call that our benchmark assessments. Those are purchased for every third through eighth grade student for EOG areas, and then for high school, all of our EOC areas. And again, this is just really real-time data to track and monitor individual student performance as well as monitor school improvement goals in the areas of teaching and learning. And so this is really what the assessment systems looks like. And as I shared with you, it can go from minute by minute, teachers are making informed decisions, but scoping out from daily to weekly, all the way to the interim benchmark assessments. And then, of course, our large-scale summative assessment, which we are currently in the midst of with the end-of-grade tests and, and of course, testing windows. But as you can see here, this is what a Mastery Connect tracker looks like. And so this would be specifically for a classroom teacher. And so you can really see how teachers can pull together small groups around specific standards very quickly and in real time. And again, going back to the time savings for teachers, they're not having to manually do this in a grade book or looking in Power School. All of this data is fed into one centralized place to be able to make the most informed decisions to personalize instruction for students. And then as Ms. Rainey shared, at the end of each benchmark, our leveled assistant superintendents work in conjunction with Student Support Services, Accountability and CNI to be able to bring our school leadership teams together to make some really great data decision rule plans through a problem of practice and then giving them tools and resources that they can help target supports for students. And then last but not least, as we're sharing today in our integrated program purchase, I think it's important to point out, this upcoming program purchase is requesting the purchase of kindergarten through eighth grade diagnostic and adaptive assessment. We have historically shifted from purchasing it using ESR funds to then going back to purchasing it for elementary and only purchasing it for a subset of school students for I Ready. And what we found is when we did not do that, schools wanted to use their own funding to be able to purchase this tool. And so over and over again, we heard from schools. to be able to purchase this tool. And so over and over again, we heard from schools, we really need this tool. And so as a result of that, we were able to bundle and purchase and have a significant cost savings to the school district, as opposed to letting each individual school purchase on their own. Additionally, what this does is it provides us a different set of data. So in Mastery Connect and with our benchmark assessments, we know exactly what students aren't mastering on grade-level students. But I couldn't necessarily tell you that a child is on a second-grade reading level in middle school based on our benchmark assessment. So this really drills down to exactly where the student is at in reading and math, and provides us a much larger comprehensive piece of data to be able to intervene. So right now, as it stands in the state, I know whether a student is proficient or not proficient on an end-of-grade test. I would not necessarily know in reading where that child is specifically at, or in math, where that child is specifically at. And this could serve students both below or above grade level. And so this gives the teachers, again, real-time data to be able to make the most informed decisions for their students. And so this is just a little bit of, we talk all the time, and Mr. Sane speaks to this, but it's not just about proficiency, it's about growth as well. And so one of the amazing resources with specifically iReady is that we can really monitor and track student growth as well as proficiency. So they might not get proficient in that one year, but if they're making 1.5, two-years' worth of growth in a year's time, we know that we are going to catch them up and get them to proficiency in a much shorter amount of time. And that's what it takes to really close that achievement gap. And so this just shows you the reports that teachers get at each of the diagnostic windows that they have for their students. Additionally, beyond that, beyond the diagnostics, students will also have the ability to have what they call adaptive pathways of instruction. So this, after they take their diagnostic assessment, they actually get assigned lessons based on the areas where they missed questions. And so these are specifically in skills that they might need to just brush up on. And as you can imagine, in a classroom full of 35 students, all 35 of them probably have a different pathway. So this allows our teachers to intentionally be able to provide a different level of support that could not be possible with 35 different students. And so this is just another sample of what a teacher would see on their dashboard. And then this is what the student interface looks like. So when we talk about adaptive pathways of instruction, this is what a student would see in terms of their MyPath, as well as the engaging video lessons and companion questions that they have on iReady. And that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you. It's a lot here, but it's an important, these are important products for our teachers, I think. Mr. Snell is our Teacher of the Year. Do you have any experience with these products, or any thoughts on this item?
I have used Mastery Connect. It's been a good bit for me, but back when social studies classes had EOCs that they had to take, I know that Mastery Connect was a pretty valuable tool in helping to track progress, just specifically because of the aforementioned things with the tracker platform, allowing you to kind of segregate the data on where the mastery is, where the lack of mastery is, in order to help with just general reteaching and identifying, you know, content weaknesses and content strengths. I'm not as familiar with the other two programs, but I know that Mastery Connect is extremely valued by many EOC teachers especially. I think that's probably the largest area of impact for high school. And then I imagine it's scalable down to middle school and elementary school in the same way for EOGs. So definitely, I would say that I know Mastery Connect in particular is a very valuable platform.
Thank you for your feedback. Board members, questions? Mr. Mills?
Just a quick question that occurred to me in this presentation. We're talking about Mastery Connect, and you've got those three pieces of it. As we go to, if we add more comprehensive curriculum packages like Arts and Letters,
Yes.
Does this Mastery Connect Item Bank become less and less relevant over time?
I would say no. And here's why. Because we're always going to continue to align assessment items specifically to the North Carolina end-of-grade test questions. And so what we would be doing is we would be working with the pacing guide of Arts and Letters to design multifaceted questions that also include items from our Item Bank, to be able to expose students to those test-like questions prior to the end-of-grade test.
Okay, thank you.
Great question.
Catherine?
I want to go back to the survey, because I think one of the concerns is, does this data go back to Panorama? How can you assure a family that this information is going to be confidential?
Yeah, we have a confidentiality agreement that's part of the contract, that the data of any student cannot be shared with any outside parties. And the data within the school system, school district, only the homeroom teacher can see the answers that they provided on the screener. Everyone else in the school kind of gets an overall score for each domain, but they don't have access to how they answered each question. And of course, parents can get, you know, an overall picture of how their student did on screeners if they just simply reach out to the teacher.
Okay. When we met with you earlier, you, our number-one question was, is this coming out of local funds? So can you explain to the public where the money's coming from?
Yeah, I'll start with the Panorama, the Student Wellness Survey, and the playbook, as well as the Panorama Pathways will be coming out of our Title IV budget. And that is our federally funded, that is for the whole child. It's designed to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids. And all of those areas are student wellness, behavior, and academics. So it kind of aligns right to what we're purchasing in those areas.
And then for Instructure, which is the Mastery Connect, as well as the Benchmark Assessments, and then for iReady, we are using a combination of disadvantaged student funding, which is state funding, as well as literacy intervention funding, which is state funding. And very candidly, those are actually funding sources designed specifically for things like instructional screeners for students, to be able to provide personalized instruction for students that may either be at risk or below grade level.
And if we didn't use that money, we would lose that money.
Most of those PRCs you have to spend down at the end of the year and can't be repurposed for anything that a district wants. They're specifically earmarked for a variety of things, but both of these things meet the criteria.
And you promised us three past teachers that this was going to make work for teachers easier and not add additional work. Okay, that's correct.
Okay, Ms. Jeminy?
Okay, sorry. I apologize. I forgot about Panorama. That was so detailed. I was thinking about the Instructure platforms. But I just wanted to say that the words spoken by the principals at Concord, I think that's a probably very standard expectation across many schools that the Panorama survey offers. Because when you are looking for positives, you tend to find positives. And when students are identified, I wrote this down earlier, when students are identified in ways where they don't become marginalized, everyone has something to offer, and it might be that school has not yet brought it out of them. Focusing on student assets over school abilities is another tool to get buy-in from students. And a lot of the Panorama survey results are used by your administrative teams in schools, the school supports that are offered, to try to help get buy-in from those students. And I think that is a valuable tool. I think that the experience that they shared is probably not just unique at Concord. I know that many schools are using those types of systems and results to help the sense of belonging from students across the schools. So I am familiar with that one, and I do think that one is a valuable asset.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking twice on that. Shannon?
So a couple of questions I had, and they've already been answered, but I'll go ahead and ask them. These are state and federal funds that have to be used in this category. And it does look like a large dollar amount, but over three years, and through the K-8 schools, it's not that much when you look at it per school. I was talking to Dr. Roth about that today.
That is correct. And for the most part, a lot of these purchases have already been happening.
Right.
So it's not like it's new additions of purchases. The key is trying to be able to yield a cost savings to us, and also being able to centralize purchases that might have been at the school level and at the district level, really optimizing cost efficiency.
Okay. The survey, we've addressed that numerous times, not mandatory. The data is kept confidential. I asked Dr. Roth today, can you just tell, like, a parent asked, well, my child's already taking benchmarks in EOGs, what does the iReady provide? And she said it was skills versus standards.
That is correct. And I would say it is much more differentiated. So what that, iReady is an adaptive assessment. So if you get a question right, it increases in rigor. You get a question wrong, it decreases in rigor. From a parent perspective, I think one of the most valuable tools is you get a nationally-normed percentile of where your child falls in both reading and mathematics across the United States. It also specifically targets key skills that you would want to focus in on, both as a parent and as a teacher, whereas standards mastery on grade-level standards, according to North Carolina, are not going to give you that level of detail or specificity to individualize instruction.
Okay. The last one, the pathways, where you have all the data at one spot, I think that's wonderful. As an ex-high school teacher, I mean, guidance counselors will have files on the desk, pulling here and there. And it's almost like my daughter who's in college, she has a college tracker. She does exactly where she is, what she needs to take. No surprises come graduation time. So...
I think the counselors would, they have loved it, because they used to have to come in here with all of their transcripts in these big boxes, and stand in here and just highlight and go through each one individually to make sure every child was on track. And you can imagine how many hours that took. And now, they can go into the tracker, they can pull up their caseload and their students, and it will actually put up a little red flag if something's not on track with their courses, or if they're missing some credits. And then it will tell you how many more credits they need, and what are the prerequisites for the track that they have to go on. So it gives them some really great information, especially if they're doing some academic advising and the student comes in. I know that when my girls were in high school, they'd go in and then they'd have to go through the whole entire transcript to make sure they had everything that they needed to go and apply to this university, or whatever they needed to do. And it was, it took a lot of time, and those conferences took a lot of time, because they had to, right, use all this. But this makes it much more efficient. And it actually, when I was talking to our high school counseling coordinator, she mentioned that it actually gives them more time to attend to some of their other things in terms of the counseling part, where they're doing academic counseling, but when do they have time to do social-emotional type help for kids?
Anybody else? All right. Well, I mean, because it's such that this is a high-dollar amount, and we are doing a few changes, and that really impacts so many students, I'd like to see it on action, but I fully support, and it certainly seems justified for these products and the need. You've done a good job of explaining the need for that. So thank you very much. So we will, does anyone want a break? We've been sitting for two and a half hours. Continue?
Motion for a break.
Okay. Motion for a five-minute recess? Okay, second? All in favor? Aye? Okay, we're in recess for five minutes. Okay, we're in recess for five minutes. Okay, and we're back. We had a brief recess, so we're now to item 7.06, which is the transfer of property to Cabarrus County. And we have Mr. Brian Cohn at the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Kapicki. Cabarrus County is required to retain ownership of the properties that have been used as collateral for debt that is associated with either a school construction project or a school renovation project. As a part of the 2024 Limited Obligation Bonds Debt Issuance Program, the Culture and Web STEM Elementary School property must be transferred over to the county as a part of that borrowing. The transfer will remain in effect for 20 years, which is the term of the lease that this board approved previously, at which time the county will then convey that property back over to the Board of Education. The general warranty deed that's presented does require authorization by this board as well as signature by the board chair. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Board members? Pretty straight, straightforward? Consent? Consent on the side? Okay for consent? All right, that'll be added to our consent.
Told you we're going to take those.
And your next item? I think you had, was a...
I do have the next item.
7.07, approval of JF Petroleum Group using Sourcewell Co-Parit...
Cooperative.
Purchasing for our Fuel Farm Project. And Mr. Whitaker's not here, but you are.
He is not here. So we are going to change our ask tonight and table this agenda item until the June board meetings, if you wouldn't mind, please. In light of some new information that has transpired very late the end of last week, I did not feel comfortable coming to you with this recommendation. And we, as an internal team, between transportation, the facilities team, and construction, need to review the information that was presented before us so that we have a better comfort level, assuring you that the path forward is going to be efficient in the most cost-effective way that we can do that. I'll be happy to answer any questions specifically you may have, but we will be bringing this back before you in June.
Mr. Eisenhower, how do we do that with a motion?
I'll do a motion to table it until the June meeting.
Okay, well, that's simple. Anybody? We have a motion, a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye? Okay, that motion has been tabled till June.
Thank you very much.
So the next item is 7.08, School Fees Revision. And we have Mr. John Legrand at the podium.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. As we do each year at this time, as we wrap up one school year and another one is on the horizon, we conduct a review of our district-wide school fees. This is a necessary step as we aim to provide the same high level of education and experience that our students and our community deserves, while also factoring in the inevitable rising costs associated with each passing year. What you're seeing right now on the screen is a crosswalk of our fees up, coming all the way from 2013 all the way through to this current year at 2425. I also have a PowerPoint presentation, if I could get to that. All right. So, thank you. So the process in which we conduct this, the school fee revision, is outlined, as you're seeing there on the slide. It is annual review. We solicit input from district leadership, principals, and we receive feedback. Well, this year, the only fee that was identified as proposed revision for the 2526 school year is the instructional slash technology fee. And this fee is collected at all grade levels and is currently $20. So I just want to tell you a little bit more about this fee. This fee amount is currently split between the school and the technology department. So out of that $20, the school gets $10 for the instructional part of it. The technology department gets $10 for technology equipment. So instructional fees assist with purchasing instructional items. You can see there on the slide, classroom supplies, student agendas, copy papers, student incentives, digital subscriptions to, for children's books, et cetera. That is just a few examples, not an all-encompassing list, of course. Also, on the other side of this, the technology fees assist with purchasing instructional technology and equipment. I don't think anybody's surprised that the price of technology continues to rise. Matter of fact, Chromebooks have gone up almost 50% since 2021. And the cost of maintenance on our aging Chromebooks has increased significantly as these get, these devices get older and have to be repaired. One of the major things is batteries. If you have a phone or a laptop at your home, of course, the older it gets, the quicker that battery goes out. A lot of times, these chargers quit working. So all of these things have to be replaced over time, and this is what these fees go towards. So the last increase to this fee was during the 2021 year. That was the COVID year when we purchased a lot of Chromebooks to go to one-to-one. And due to the rising cost of instructional supplies and technology, a proposal of a $10 increase from 20 to 30 for the 2526 school year so that the school gets $15 instead of 10, the technology department gets $15 instead of 10 as well. And I just want to point out that any student that is not able to pay this, of course, there will not be any technology or instructional supplies withheld from them. This is just to help offset the rising cost of continuing to provide those items on a daily basis to our students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for any questions.
All right, board members, questions on the school fees? Go ahead, Mr. Tredaway.
I understand, and I think we all understand, prices have gone up and all that. I think, I'm interested next year in making this an ask in our budget proposal to the county commissioners. I think it would be great if they could say they took this off our plate and off our parents' plates going forward.
Any other comments?
That would be, if my math is right, around a million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tredaway. Anybody else? All right, well, since it does involve our students, I'd like our stakeholders to have an opportunity to comment on it, so we'll put it on action for next week. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we had our, we modified our agenda to add 7.09, which is the resolution. And I think you've got a proposed motion?
Yep. The motion is that the CCS Board of Education adopt the resolution opposing Senate Bill 754, School Calendar Flexibility: A New Alternative as Presented.
So you're making that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Freeman. Any further discussion on the resolution? Sam?
We had a report from our calendar committee, and I think that emphasizes the importance of what we're doing today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor of the resolution? As it was, motion was presented, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that's a seven-zero vote. And we'll send that on to our representative in Raleigh. Okay, that was all we have for the action item. We do have a need to go into closed session tonight. So there's a motion for that, and I'll read it. So the motion is, a motion of a second, that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811A3, including cases involving Katherine Gillage, Kenneth Baker, Carol Kendrick, Otis Bond, Sarah Sandra Ruth Moore, Russell John Gregory, Cynthia Perlier, and Laura Rubel, and Miller, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811A6. Do I have somebody who wants to make that motion?
Somebody.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tredaway. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We are heading in, going to say goodnight to our listening audience, and we will see you next week.